All right, good afternoon, everybody. Why don't we get started with the meeting today? It is four thirty-five, and this is the meeting of the Public Safety Committee of the Springfield City Council. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Before we begin, I would like to make a general comment. It will appear to me that I just noticed that there has been a a entry error on the agenda today, and you all should have a copy of the agenda. The public portion was not on the agenda. I don't know how it got to the agenda. I can see that I have a number of people from the public that have joined. So that was not intended to be there to say... However, what I will do is I will allow the public to stay on the link since they took the time to be on the link. They're only made a reasonable decision. However, I would like to keep this conversation into the pertinent officials in this in this conversation. If you do have any specific question you would like to get to me or any member of the Public Safety Committee, you can definitely email me. You can call the city council office. We'll give you that number in a second if you give me a second, which is 413-787-6170. And you can get your concerns to me or any member of the Public Safety Committee or any councilor for that matter. With that being said, welcome to everybody. I would like to recognize committee member Counselor Fenton, who has joined us on the call. Also, I would like to recognize Counselor Gobain. I would like to recognize Counselor Blake Bruce, Counselor Harris, who are here on the call. Also, we have Attorney Kevin Murphy. We have Solicitor Payne. And we have the deputy. Deputy, good afternoon, sir. Good seeing you again. And I have Commissioner Fernandez. Commissioner Fernandez, you appear to be the only person for the Police Commission. I was hoping there's five of you. I know Counselor, excuse me, Commissioner, well done, just emailed us saying he couldn't make it. I wonder where the where the other threes are. But anyways, but Commissioner Fernandez, thank you for being here. This meeting is coming. Anybody has any questions so far? Can everybody hear me okay? Yeah? Okay. Very well. So the agenda today is that we're going to be discussing is updating the policies and procedures for the Police Commission, complaint process and hiring and discipline. I would like to keep the conversation as brief as possible as we have to end by 5:15. I know we're not going to get on the answers today, but we want to get this ball rolling. So Commissioner Fernandez, would you be able to, seeing that you are the only member of the Police Commission right now? I'm honestly disappointed you are the only member of the Police Commission here. Can you give us, if you could, a little bit of an update on the policies and procedures that the Police Commission have been working on, where you are on this so far so far?
I know that Gary Birdie is gonna ask you. I thought a couple of other... Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
I believe a couple of my other members were gonna call in. I've been traveling pretty much all day, so I didn't check my emails. I know that I want to direct all my, any questions in regards to to our Judge Payne that's on there, but I know that a lot has happened, a lot of good stuff. We're actually working very well with the mayor's office. A lot since I forgot what we left off last time, so I can only speak on what I'm seeing. So we got our emails up to date. We got everything taken care of, our addresses, how people can communicate with us in the community, all civilians can communicate with us. But aside from that, I'm going to direct any of my other questions that mean legal matters to our Judge Payne, if possible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I address that point, I want to say that this is true. I looked into it since the last meeting. Now, the information to meet the Police Commission is on the city website. They have a complaint process, a complaint form that is public on the website, which is good. And you can file complaints in different locations. Commissioner Fernandez, this is not directly addressed to you, ma'am. However, if I have questions to the Police Commission, it's to the Police Commission, not to anybody else. If I have questions to somebody else, I will address them accordingly. I understand where you're coming from and I understand your position. I am annoyed that you're the only one here, ma'am. I'm annoyed you're the only one here because if I have questions for anybody else, I will ask them, but my question is directed towards the Police Commission, not to anybody else. Counselor Fenton, sir, would you, do you have any questions on this particular matters?
I do not.
You do not? Okay. Very well. So before we go to Judge Payne, Attorney Murphy, well, welcome to the meeting. This is your first time you're here in the meeting. Thank you very much for joining us. So Attorney Murphy, before I get to the judge, is your... So tell us who you are. What's your role with the Police Commission?
My name is Kevin Murphy. I have an office here at 121 State Springfield. And right now, my role is technically I-I-U attorney. That's the official name. I was appointed at the beginning of August, and my role is to basically review all the complaints that come in from the public. And at that point, they go immediately to the I-I-U unit. From there, they send me a copy of it. And they make a general recommendation. I review the complaint and then send it, send the recommendation back to them if I agree with them.
Actually, Attorney Murphy, you appear to be muted. Can you unmute yourself? There you go. Sorry, we lost you there. Go ahead, sir.
I said there's three possible recommendations that come out of...
Not me. I need him. What? I'm sorry.
Okay, you guys, if anybody's not talking, please mute yourself. Go ahead, Attorney Murphy.
Okay, and there's three possible scenarios that come in. One is an AI, an administrative inquiry. That is given directly, that after reviewing it, that is probably the least severe investigative process in which the officers supervisor would review it. Some of those that have come in are people complaining that they got a ticket, meaning a driving ticket. And most, a lot of them are somewhat, I think, misunderstood the process, and they basically want to fight the ticket through the, through the internal investigation unit instead of the court. There's also some other things. There may be someone said that they saw an officer driving erratically in a cruiser, things such as that. And that is given immediately to the supervisor to review. The second one is P-I-E, a preliminary investigation of an employee. And that is given to the, one of the supervisors in the Police Department to review at that point in time. They review it with the officers commanding, immediately supervising officer, but it's higher up the chain and can lead to sanctions. Some of those might be rudeness to a citizen, whether it was, whether they were giving him a stop, whether they were giving them a ticket or coming to their house to investigate any type of an event. The last one is a special order. A special order is a serious offense in that it could be criminal, some type of corruption, some type of misdeed, and that actually goes to the I-I-U at that point, which starts a, an investigation. The investigation is much like a criminal one. It's taken under advisement early on. It's not made known to anyone at that point. And at that point, the three sergeants or the two lieutenants within the I-I-U go out and start seeking information, statements, things such as that. So so far, I can say that in this process, I've received probably about ten to fifteen of these citizen complaints. And they come in in a very, in different ways. Obviously, some come in as just written complaints, that they get a form from the website. Other ones come in as emails from the website. Some of them have come in as oral. They call into the police station and make a complaint. And some of them have been actually anonymous and with no name, but the allegations against an officer or something that occurred. Those, the I-I-U has done their best. They go back through all the 911 calls or any calls to the police station around the time that this person alleges that something happened. They also go back to all officer responses to any type of an event. All the officers have to respond whenever they go to any type of an event or a stop. And at that point, they try to search out who that officer may be and try to put some credence to the complaint.
So Attorney Murphy, basically, your role is to deal with the complaint process in the Police Department, correct?
It is. And but then, more importantly, I think it'll be also is to try to develop. Right now, obviously, there's policies and procedures that are going through as a result of the consent decree. But as a result of this, there'll be a manual, hopefully done by the beginning of next year, which will in effect show this process, how it moves step by step, so that the public itself would be able to go on the website, see what the manual says, and read how a complaint should go through the process all the way, perhaps even to the Police Commission.
Okay, so do you have any input, Attorney Murphy, on the complaint, on the policies and procedures?
On the policies and procedures, no.
Okay, so, very well. So Attorney Murphy, and thank you, sir. And thank you too. Welcome to the city of Springfield. Now, Attorney, so you say once a, a, always Joe files a complaint, it goes to I-I-U first, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so at which point comes back to you again?
Right after that complaint is sent there, usually one of the individuals in the I-I-U will send it over to me. So I would say within, if not the same day, the next day.
Okay. And what process is the Police Commission made aware that a complaint has been made?
I don't believe... I don't, I don't know. I have no responsibility to the Police Commission. I'm not sure they are made known. It is made known until it's, depending on the seriousness of the offense.
Okay. Commissioner Fernandez, will you be able to add on that, ma'am, if you could?
Can you repeat that? Because I'm actually speaking to you guys on my phone and...
That's okay. Would you, would you be able to tell me at which point after a complaint is filed, you guys hear about it?
No, I won't feel comfortable answering that because I don't want to be sure I'm answering inappropriately, but I wish my, one of my board members are here to answer that question. So no, I don't.
And this is exactly why I wanted more people from the Police Commission here, because we all took our time to be here. And so I'm starting to see a part of here, one of the questions I asked.
Can I just clarify? I don't mean to interrupt you, but I don't think, I don't think Madeline would know at what point it gets to her. I think someone from the city should know that process. They did it first.
That's correct.
And then it goes somewhere, and then it comes back, and then at some point, it goes to the Police Commission. So I think someone in the office, whether it's Judge Payne, Attorney Murphy, someone from the Police Department should know at what point commissioners are made aware of the complaint. And we also know at what point everyone is notified about the complaint.
Counselor Whitfield, I'm getting, I'm getting to the point, Counselor Whitfield, I was just speaking about the generality that, again, for the second time, I'm going to restate how I know I am. That Counsel, Commissioner Fernandez took the time to be here, and thank you, ma'am, for this. So my annoyance is not that I was you, Commissioner Fernandez, is to this process, which seems more confused than ever. I see Counselor Gobain has him. Counselor?
Thank you very much. And I do have another meeting at five o'clock, so I will have to leave, but I wanted to just, I guess, have a question. The I-I-U, who, who consists of the I-I-U? Who is on the I-I-U?
The I-I-U is all police officers. There's a captain who runs it. There's two lieutenants, and there's three sergeants in the Springfield Police Department. They are the I-I-U, and they report to Superintendent Claproot.
Thank you. And so Attorney Murphy, you said you have an office at 121 State Street?
I do.
That's okay. And so this, this goes back to, I guess, my concerns regarding the Police Commission and Council Abila. You know, that we've been having this conversation for a very long time. The Police Commission is supposed to be coming up with these policies and procedures. However, they have nowhere to meet. They have, don't have a budget. They don't have any type of support. And then what it looks like, from what I'm hearing, is that they never get to hear a complaint, which I think is contradictory to what consent decree says, right? Because initially, the reason that the city council fought to have a Police Commission is because we needed more oversight, right? We needed more citizen oversight. And that doesn't sound like that's what's happening right here when they're going to the police officers, to the captains, and then they're going to Attorney Murphy, and then they're going to go back to the I-I-U, and then maybe to Superintendent Claproot. It just seems like the same thing is happening. It happened five, 10, 15, 20 years ago. And that's the reason that the Police Commission was formed and was fought for by the city council. So I'm just very, very concerned, you know, with these issues that I'm hearing today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Gobain. I would like to, my apologies. I didn't recognize Counselor Whitfield before, but she has joined us, and we also have Counselor Allen, who has joined us as well. But Counselor Whitfield, you have a question, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry for interrupting you before. I'm just like, I hear you asking this question, and then you get a "I don't know" back. And I'm like, you're the ones who's supposed to know. Like, you're the I-I-U, so I'm gonna go back to Attorney Murphy and ask again, because I missed the first part of the process. But at what point is the Police Commission notified of the complaint? At what point?
I would believe they're notified by Superintendent Claproot after whatever investigation has to be done, if it has, if it, if it's deemed to have a punishment factor to it.
Punishment factor.
She is, she is the one that would refer it to the Police Commission or to some higher up, but I don't have the authority to hand it to them. It's only, but they goes to the commission, is my understanding, because they are the board that will hand out the punishments.
Okay, so when we say punishment factor, we mean if the officer was seen that could be like in some type of situation where...
Right, right, whether it be a suspend, whether it be a suspend.
I don't know punishment factor. Okay. So here's a couple of things that I want. On the I-I-U, you know, we would like the names sent to the city councilors, please. Can you let us know who those officers are? You can send it via email, the captain, the couple of lieutenants or three lieutenants, and whoever's else on the I-I-U investigation team, we would like to know who those are. Also, the complaints that come in, is there a number, a solid number of complaints that came in versus what was referred to the Police Commission? And that's for anyone in City Hall who might have that information.
Well, I, my understanding is you could definitely get a number of how many complaints were filed.
Yes, filed.
Okay, I mean, because those come in and those are docketed or documented. Whether or not the ones that go to the Police Commission, like I said, I wouldn't know that exact number at this point in time because it's only been several months, but I imagine both of them are definable numbers that you could get.
Okay, so I want them. That would be nice. If we could get those from Deputy Rupert, can you get those numbers for us?
Counselor Whitfield, if you, if you allow me quickly, I'm just gonna interject and piggyback over there. So Deputy Rupert and Kevin Murphy. So I think you, Kevin Murphy, Attorney Murphy, you said ten to fifteen complaints. We want to know the entire amount of complaints that have been received since the Police Commission has been in Arctic. And how many of those complaints have been referred to the, to the Police Commission? And the disposition of those. Now, let me, let me be clear. I'm not asking for data of personal data. I'm not asking for a particular case. I'm asking general. How many complaints, how many refer to the Police Commission? And what the disposition has been of all the cases. Thank you. I'm sorry, Attorney Whitfield, followed by Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, but I wasn't quite finished, Mr. Chair, but I just, I just got one more. I just want to make sure we get the names of who's on the I-U team as well, of the names of the officers, and just to reiterate, the total amount of cases versus what was sent to the Police Commission. And I will yield before.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Fenton, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me see how I lower my hand here. So my question is more about the status of the commission and what, what steps and measures we should expect to be taken in order to come up with policies and procedures. You know, obviously, this is a new board with substantial, very substantial responsibilities and powers. And serving as a member of the similarly new instituted Residency Compliance Commission, our experience there has been one that's taken many months. We're now into the third quarter of our first year of operation, and I can speak personally to the fact that I have spent many weeks and dozens and dozens of hours preparing a policies and procedures manual that will answer all sorts of process flow questions like the ones that are coming up, like what, what is the form that a complaint can be received? Who first receives it? What is the discretion that that receiving agent can exercise at the time that the form is submitted? And what responsibility does that person have to turn it on to the next person in the process flow within the, within the organization? So it would seem to me like that should be a primary objective of the commission before the completion of the first calendar year of its existence would be to come up with a comprehensive policies and procedures reference that is adopted by the board and clearly answers some of these questions about process flow. So, you know, I guess, I don't know who's the most appropriate person to answer it. It's probably, you know, the law department or the police department, but is that a direction that is being taken for the commission? And, and if so, you know, what steps will be taken to complete that? That process?
I think Counselor Fenton, your question was addressed, that was the law department?
Yeah, so maybe Judge Payne, I don't know if you're in the best position to answer, but is there, are there policies and procedures for the commission? And, and if not, will they be produced in a way that will help us answer some of these process flow questions?
Well, there will be policies and procedures developed. We're in the process of that as part of the settlement agreement.
So, so whatever policies and procedures, whatever policies and procedures are developed would have to be done and in concert with the ordinance, the normal business processes of the SPD, and then also the consent decree. Is that right?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I don't want to speak for the commission or anybody else, but again, having my own personal experiences in the Residency Compliance Commission recently, that has been the sole focus of our commission for the first nine months of our existence. And I chaired the working group that completed and drafted those regulations. And it would, it would seem to me like the, the best way to get all of this answered is to have that, to have that document completed. And I think the public has an interest in that, and, and I think the council has an interest in seeing that too, so that we can have a, have a document to refer to that answers some of these questions. And you know, what I would ask is that the commission and the department, the Police Department and the law department consider what steps should be taken to develop those procedures. And that will, I believe and hope, flush out a lot of these questions about who gets what when and what level of discretion is exercised, etc.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Fenton. I will make that a sole, I will make that an agenda item, excuse me, an agenda item for the next meeting, which I do intend to call the next meeting. I do see that I have Counselor Hurst with a question. Counselor Hurst, sir?
Sorry, I'm trying to figure out these.
You're muted, Counselor.
Sorry, sorry. I was trying to figure out these emojis, and that was clearly an accident. So, I, I'm sorry. Give me one second. Give me one second, Jack. Yes. Sorry. So I guess a couple of different things. One, you know, one of the things that, you know, that is troublesome, I guess, to me from the outset, and I'm not 100% sure, Madeline, whether you were directed to have all questions answered by Solicitor Payne, or whether that's just something you feel comfortable with. But, you know, which seemed to me that at some point in time, these particular questions that, that we're asking, you all ought to be able to answer. And I know it, it might be difficult right now because folks haven't necessarily put you all in a position to be able to answer these questions, but for me, that's critical. Counselor Fenton, I think to your point, which is, which is a valid one, the fact that you saw fit to develop those processes and procedures and put those in place for the compliance unit, and you knew that that was integral to you all moving forward at the outset. I'm confused as to how we haven't arrived at that point with the Police Commission, and, you know, what are we, six months in? So, so that to me also is troublesome. And I just would add that in conjunction with all of the people that you named that should help develop those processes and procedures, somebody independent has to come in, and it would make sense that, that we bring those individuals on so that the bulk of the work doesn't fall on either the Police Department, which to me, there's a, there's a clear conflict of interest there, or the solicitor, also a conflict of interest, or just the Police Commission, and they might not necessarily be capable of doing that. And then just even from a work standpoint, they probably need assistance. And so outs, short of, short of somebody inside doing it, it just would seem to me that we ought to strongly consider someone from the outside coming in and helping to carry or make, helping to make that happen. So, you know, my hope is that they'll heed your advice, Counselor Fenton, because I think it makes perfect sense. But at the same time, you know, it seems like everybody could use somebody independent, if not just for, you know, the fact that it makes sense, but also for the fact that it's going to be a lot of work. And I'm not so sure we can do it internally.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Counselor Whitfield, just give me a second. I will recognize in a second, but I do have a question for either Commissioner Fernandez or Solicitor Payne. Can either one of you tell me, it is obviously clear that the Police Commission has been operating without clear policies and procedures. So how was the determination? May walk me through the process, if you could, as to how was decided that the, this is a step for the complaint process as of right now? And why is the Police Commission not made aware necessarily of a complaint? How, how did we get here? Because that's, to me, that's very troublesome, particularly the fact that the Police Commission is not fully aware of complaints. Either one of you, either Solicitor Payne or Commissioner Fernandez?
I don't think there's a reason for the commissioners to know about a complaint until it reaches the stage that it would go to them for consideration of whether to hold a hearing or to seek to impose discipline. Some of these matters are handled administratively pursuant to the settlement agreement. And so the idea that the commissioners would be made of, would be made aware of every complaint, really, as I think Attorney Murphy said, a number of these complaints are those of issues of rudeness or someone is upset because they've been received some sort of a citation, or they have been questioned by the officers. These are matters that I don't think the commissioners are going to be burdened with. That's what the I-I-U has to do through the policies and procedures that are being set up through the settlement agreement. It has to be put by the superintendent, and then when it's appropriate, it's given to the commission.
So Solicitor Payne, so you're saying, I read the DOJ agreement on, I'm out of... I might have missed out, so just want to be clear. You're saying that the the agreement says. The complaints are gonna go to the I U first, then to the commission?
Of course, they have to go to the I I U.
So, right, but you're telling me that's on the DOJ agreement?
Yes, that's part of it. We're working that policy. We're working out the specific I I U policy right now with the Department of Justice.
Oh, you're working on it now?
Yes, yes, along with the other policies that we're working on as well.
So it hasn't, okay, so it's not signed agreement as of here, this is something that has been developed as we speak?
There's a settlement agreement. The settlement agreement sets out what has to be done. What has to be done is to set out certain policies and procedures. That become the policies of the Springfield Police Department. We are close to making those policies on a number of the issues. One of the areas that we have not completed yet is the I I U uh policy. We're working on it, we're working closely on it, but there are still some outstanding issues that have been resolved.
So this complaint process is not, hasn't been finalized with DOJ yet?
Well, the the complaint process is there. There is a complaint process. Uh, it it is set out in the agreement, it is set out in policies that we are adopting. And and anyone can find that, uh, you said it yourself. The, I think, I believe you did earlier in the meeting, that the uh I I U complaint form is now on the uh is on the website. Along with other places that it can be obtained. We take every complaint, whether it is an anonymous phone call or whether it is a written complaint. That is submitted and everything in between.
Right, so uh uh Solicitor Payne, I I I want to be clear, I'm not quite sure that I understand fully. Uh, so we, there's an agreement with the DOJ in which the policies and procedures are going to be developed for. The you inter handling of complaints, that's the agreement, but we're currently working on. The process of those complaints and that has not been finalized yet, yet.
The power, the the full policy has not been finalized.
Okay, that's right.
Process for complaints and that is now.
Okay, so I will, uh, I will express my concern with this. Uh, this is how I interpret it. I I think that um. The the intent of the ordinance is to have the police commission to be the ultimate authority. Of the Police Department. It is, that's how that that's, it says, it has appointed and disciplined authority. Uh, so I I am very concerned with that, uh, particular ones. I think that will be circumventing the ordinance. Uh, but Counselor Whitfield, ma'am, yours.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna clarify that the I I U has always been part of the process, so. It's not like the um complaint is saying, let's create this process through the I U. They're probably just revamping it. So I just wanted to make that clear, that I U has always been involved in the complaint process since I know. Um, about the complaint process, so it's not recreating will. I just want to be uh clear on that. They probably just have to tweak some things. But I do want to say that I agree with um Counselor Fenton on um taking more time to make sure. That these policies are in place and I was wondering if there's a turnaround time um to complete the um policies and procedures? Is there um estimated turnaround time? Or do you think it's gonna take a couple more months?
Well, we have, we've already, we're at the end stage with a number of the uh policies that we've adopted. Right now, they will be reviewed by the compliance evaluator and then they will be presented to the federal judge, federal court judge. Um, the I I U matter is, we're well on our way with that, but there are a couple of issues that have not been resolved. Primarily because they involve collective bargaining issues that still have to be um uh resolved.
Uh, that makes sense. Um, so in the meantime, the complaints that come in, they're all tracked. Um, what happens with the paper complaints? Because I could see where we have a nice trail on the complaints that's submitted online. But the, how do the paper complaints, do they get stamped and logged? How do how do we, do we scan them? Do anybody know?
I mean, there's a record kept, obviously. We have to, we have to keep a record of uh every complaint.
I'm not gonna say obviously, Judge Payne, because I have people submit complaints and went back to City Hall. And City Hall didn't have a record of their complaints, so I'm not gonna say obviously that we um. Yeah, that should be the process, but it hasn't always worked that way and I think that's why they um created the online system. Um, because people's complaints were coming up missing. I'm not gonna say when they were always um. Made the complaint right at the Police Department, but they are, they can be made at other locations and I know that even in the mayor's office and I know that um. Some of them have come up missing in the past. That's why I asked the question of um how they are tracked. Um, I'm gonna yield to Counselor Hurst because we're gonna have to end this call, but I just wanted to clarify the I I U. Portion that that's not new in the um consent decree. That's not a new thing, that they've always done that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Uh, Counselor Hurst, I'm gonna give you the last questions on the subject, then I wanna talk about hiring real quick. Uh, just to do a quick time check, it's five ten. Uh, so we uh, we will have another meeting. I will schedule a meeting in about three or four weeks on. To continue on this, uh, Counselor Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, you know, the other point that I that I would make is that, you know, I'd like to. Know what the role is of the police commission, because if they're responsible for hiring, firing, promotions and discipline. Then it would seem to me that they ought to be involved in the actual process of uh of creating. The procedures for the complaint process, right? In conjunction with uh you, Judge Payne, and with in conjunction with the DOJ. I mean, it it just seems that they should have more than involve role if they're responsible for so much. And so, you know, at some point in time, I'd like to. Clarify exactly what their role is and um.
Their role is strictly, their role, Counselor, is strictly discipline.
So they're they're just really a glorified community police and review board and.
Yeah, I don't, I I I won't uh uh characterize them other than to say that their role is that of disciplines.
So when you say it's it's that of discipline, are you doing that based off of the ordinance? Are you doing it based off of the judge's ruling? How are you arriving at that conclusion?
Added through the um uh the court decision and I'm also the memorandum of understanding that each of the commissioners sign. When they uh accepted the position of a commissioner.
So when they accepted the position of a commissioner, are you telling me that they gave up any other rights other than discipline?
They signed, they signed a memorandum of understanding of what their duties were and those duties, those duties involve disciplines. They are not involved in hiring, they are not involved in promotional work, they are not involved in any sort of administrative responsibilities. Of the department.
Who dictates their duties? Is that you? Is that this? Is that, who who dictates their duties? Is it dictated based off of ordinance or is it dictated based off of what the administration wants, what you want? Who who does that?
Well, I think it's uh based on the the court decision and uh the decision of the administration.
So are you saying the court decision only allowed them to be in charge of discipline or are you saying that when they signed the memorandum of understanding? To be a police commissioner that they um that they gave away their ability to be involved in hiring, firing?
It gave the city the uh the opportunity to set up the commission and to give them the responsibilities that they thought were appropriate. And for this purpose and their uh, that is discipline.
So it sounds to me like, like you all have successfully thwarted the ordinance that. That was in place, that the judge ruled on. And I I know we don't have a lot of time, but. You know, I think that 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 is troublesome and problematic and certainly something that at some point in time has to be addressed. Uh, and can you send, can you send us that memorandum of understanding, Judge Payne, that they signed? To be a police commissioner?
I will get a. I will get one over to the office tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Uh, Counselor Hurst, you have pretty much asked my questions that I was gonna ask, so uh, that's good, but I do, I do wanna end with this. Uh, Solicitor Payne, uh, pigging back of Counselor Hurst was saying. Uh, and I don't think anybody's gonna loosen their sleep with what I think right now, but I'm still gonna say for the record, and I'm going to uh. Just put it out there, I I profoundly disagree with you. I profoundly disagree with the those who have who subscribe to that interpretation. It is my understanding that we are the legislative body of this city. That we, the city council, created the law. And that the purpose and intent of the law is that the police commission. Has the appointing and discipline authority, if I may. I looked up real quick, uh, just looking the M M D Ls, it says appointing authority. Is defined as any person, board or commission with power to appoint or employ. In civil service positions. So, I I wanna see those M O U as well. Uh, I do thank you, uh, Solicitor, because you have given us some answers that we were looking for. Uh, uh, so I I am concerned, I I'm concerned how this is being put out onto plate. As I said before, I'm concerned that uh. The intent of the law is not being followed, that it's being circumvented with very cute words and very cute. Creators thinking. Disagree with me if you may, but that's how I see it. Um, and so, but I will schedule a meeting. It is now five seventeen. Um, we do have a committee of the whole Wednesday. I'm gonna continue talking about DOJ is gonna be there. Uh, I ask the public to attend that meeting if they wanna learn more as to what's happening. Uh, it's gonna be at City Hall. And I will uh stay in touch and let you know when the next meeting is gonna be. And I do have an expectation for the police commission, at least the majority, to be present. Uh, with that being said, thank you, everybody, for attending. Uh, it is now five seventeen and the meeting on the public safety is adjourned. Thank you. God bless.